Still have daylight. Well, still have daylight.
That would be nice.
I think we're ready.
We're all good?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled April 1st, 2024 City Council meeting. If you could all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. If we get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Strowman, absent. Councilmember Walker, here. Councilmember Engle-
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagan-
Here.
Mayor Bellinger-
Here. Before we move on to the consent calendar, we had a request with Councilman Strowman's absence to pull items six and seven from the agenda until our next regularly scheduled meeting on the 15th, I believe it is.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring that to council's attention. If we are good with that or not, I believe, because it's on the agenda, we have to vote on that. Does that make a motion?
I can have consensus, but I need, do need consensus of at least three.
At least three. So if we want to push that, items six and seven.
I mean, I would respect that. That's my opinion, but.
Okay.
I'd be all for going through it.
What's that?
I'd be all for going through it.
All right.
I would respect that request as well.
All right. I think you've got four, four, four votes on the idea of pushing that out, then?
I think you got three.
Three? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Sorry.
Okay. Got it.
So we have three to push off. So we will push items six and seven to the next agenda, agendaized meeting, then. Starting off on business for tonight, consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Is there an item on this consent calendar here at the council level we'd like to pull or discuss further?
And Mayor, just, sorry, council member, just one item. The wording on item three should be adopt the second reading. Just make that note for the public.
I'd like to pull four.
Okay. Any other items to be pulled? Anybody in the room here that would like to pull any item on the consent calendar for further consideration or communication on? Seeing none, then we'll take a motion for the balance, then?
All motion to approve items one through three.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. To item number four, Mayor Pro Tim.
I'd like to maybe have the council, you know, shell this and kind of look at it closer for the council members if they haven't already looked deeper into it. But I have some reservations with Red Cross operating in our community center under the guise of potentially, you know, any disaster. And I say that because there's quite a bit of evidence I have right here. If you guys like to read through some of this stuff, where they're aiding and vetting the, what you want to call invasion of our southern border. And I am very concerned that they might try to use our facilities here as some sort of a staging ground or a place to bring people unvetted who need to be vetted before they're in our country. That's just how I feel. So I think it's something that we should be reviewing that contract a little bit closer so there's better oversight or there's some contingency in there for that.
Have any more, any more information that could expand on that for us, staff?
Not that I'm aware of. I just know that they would like to use it in the case of disasters, to be able to use the community center to the disaster relief sites that they can put people who were displaced. So I don't know what that would fully encompass.
Correct. That's, that's my concern is the verbiage isn't tight enough. And last thing I want to do is import a border issue into our town. So there needs to be better verbiage, is my opinion.
Nothing would necessarily stop us as a community, should we have a disaster in the local area, from us making the emergency call ourselves to open it up to our residents, should we feel the need to do so. Do we need an agreement, I guess, is the question, not looking in deeper, because I hadn't thought about that aspect of that. When looking into this, there's nothing that stops us from saying, Escalon residents, we'll take care of you. Go to the community center. We don't have to have an agreement with the Red Cross to do something like that. Is there something that the Red Cross offers that above and beyond? I don't know. I'm just trying to learn more.
Yeah. They're, they're the organization that helps, you know, provides resources, both in terms of materials, goods, as well as person hours and staffing. The city does have an existing contract with the Red Cross for the use of the community center. It was signed in 2018. This updated agreement allows not only the use of the facility, but storage of materials and parking. It was staff's thought on this item that those would be positive things for this community because they would be the sort of hub if there was a disaster. We'd have more resources, more, well, resources here. Happy to look into it further. I can't personally speak to, you know, what Red Cross is.
Which at face value, sounds awesome, but I just want to make sure we don't get taken advantage of. So I think there needs to be either, we neither need to close that loophole potentially, or as a council, maybe look in a different direction. And that's just my opinion. And that's why I wanted to see if we could table it and have the council members maybe look at it closer if they haven't already. I don't know if you guys have yet or not.
No. But my assumption is council's thoroughly gone through that contract?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I guess what I would say is, I didn't look at it from that perspective.
Yeah.
I mean, so I think I'd want to go, to be honest with you, I'd want to go through it again with that perspective on it. I mean, it, it seemed pretty vanilla, but maybe in this case, vanilla's not a great thing. So, yeah.
I think I'm, I'm looking for more of a definition of disaster. So I get disaster relief, and I would like to kind of see what that actually means to the Red Cross.
Because right now, technically, there's all kinds of national emergencies and what we call disasters, right?
Right. No, I get it. I understand. I definitely understand the, the point.
I just don't want our community to get potentially waylaid, given the circumstances we're seeing right now, unfortunately. That's just how I feel.
I personally wouldn't have a problem with tabling this item until council has another opportunity with that idea of a lens to take a look at it.
I could support that. So we need consensus?
Do we need consensus or a motion on that?
There's consensus to basically table it and bring it back.
Okay. Let's go ahead and table it and bring it back, then. All right. So we are now done with consent calendar items. Moving on to staff communications and updates. Item five, city manager's report.
Okay. In this section, we'll also do department reports. So I'll turn it over first to interim chief, Hartgraves.
So in response to the anonymous threats that led to the recent school lockdowns on March 6th and March 7th, the Escalon Police Department managed to identify a suspect or a subject. On March 21st, officers received account information linking a local 16-year-old male to the threats. Officers obtained an arrest warrant for the suspect as well as search warrants for his residence and electronic devices. The suspect was arrested. There was nothing that led officers to believe that the suspect had any plans to carry out any of the threats. Additionally, Escalon PD and the Escalon Unified School District have taken this opportunity to further coordinate on the communication approach after such incidents to the residents and parents of children at the schools.
You chief?
All right. Public Works has a couple of things. Sorry I missed last meeting, but a couple of items that came up. One was the ballot box, the location of the ballot box. There are some irrigation lines in the area that we are aware of and we're okay with that. There's no main water lines. It's going to be kind of hard to avoid some irrigation lines around City Hall and PD. So if you guys are okay with the location that you decide on, we're okay with it there to approve in that spot for them. I don't think we need to, to find another spot in the area.
Really?
As far as the orchard, I actually spoke with Lyna Dachas today. They mobilled into the Santa Fe Orchard, and they're going to start removing those trees tomorrow. They hope to have the grinder in on Escalon Avenue by end of week. So they hope within the next few weeks, they're actually having both grind it down and level down there. They apologized with weather, backed up schedules. They were just doing the best they could, but they are getting in on us this week to get it knocked out. So we should get those resolved soon.
The tree's down. We're not creating any issues with our neighboring farmers, are we?
As far as, we're not creating the, the bug issues for the farms.
Right. Now that the trees are upended and yanked.
Yes, sir.
We've eliminated that issue and risk.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Great.
That's all for Public Works. Thank you.
Yeah. Excuse me. My apologies. Two items from city manager's office. We will have at the next council meeting, updates from our consultants on the wastewater treatment plant project, as well as the SSJID surface water project. These will turn into quarterly updates to the council at council meetings. So we will have those slated, we have those slated for the next agenda on April 15th. In regards to the SSJID project, we did submit for the CPF grant through Harder's office for the SSJID project, the maximum amount we could apply for, $2 million. As you're aware, last year, we were not successful. We hope to be successful this year. And that's it.
Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move into matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record. However, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. At this point, we will open up to the, those in the audience here, if you'd like to come to the podium and speak on any topic that's not on the agenda tonight. Going once, going twice in the room? Is there anybody on the go-to meeting that may like to speak on any items tonight?
We do have one person on go-to.
Okay.
Sherry, was there something you wanted to speak about? See, you have your hands raised.
We'll have that unmuted.
Right now, you're muted. Nope, she dropped.
I think.
Sherry, did you have something?
Sorry, that would be, yes, I did. I'm sorry. I couldn't get my mic to work. The cameras aren't working on the go-to.
I don't think normally you see the cameras. You just see the screen.
Yeah. The video on YouTube.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. I usually watch on YouTube, but you can't respond on YouTube. And so if I want to respond, I have to be on go-to. I couldn't see anything. Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Then we'll go ahead and close matters presented from the audience at this point. Administrative matters, we have moved items six and seven to our next meeting. Onto item eight, approved resolution XX24, approving and participating and allocating of funding for the regional early action planning grant funds.
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon my cop here. As was read, the city does, is required to adopt a resolution so that we can participate in REAP 2.0 funds. We will get a significant, we potentially could get a significant amount more than we received in REAP 1.0. We received about $34,000 in REAP 1.0 a couple of years back. We could receive up to $300,000 in this round of funding. REAP is really for the purposes to accelerate progress towards our state housing goals and climate commitments through a strengthened partnership, to reduce VMT, accelerate infill housing, and increase housing supply. So the last round, REAP 1.0, city used the funds to go towards our infrastructure project. We do have a moratorium really on annexations, but on, on housing development in annexations until phase three of the sewer project is complete. So the idea here is whatever portion of the $300,000 that we receive would go towards that project. So that is staff's report on this item. There is a resolution that if the council approves, would be adopted, and we would apply and be eligible for those funds.
Any questions on this item here at the council level? Mistakenly put a five instead of a three on that number and try and see if you can get a half minute. Any questions in the audience or online on this item here in front of us right now, item number eight? All right. Bring it back to council, then. We'll look for a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Motion to approve resolution number XX-24, approving the participation allocation funding for the regional early action planning grant, funds awarded to the San Joaquin Council of Governments on behalf of the San Joaquin County member agencies.
Second that.
So a motion and second. All units in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. Next up on our agenda is item number nine, under council communications and future agenda items. This is an item brought to us by Mayor Pro Tim Hagan. Take it away.
Well, originally, we had, had taken part of that 18 acres by the community center to turn it in to potentially have a deal with CCH to create some senior housing. But unless private funds are used, we're at the, you know, there's a hook with all the state funds, unfortunately, that doesn't allow local, the locals here to drive the bus, so to speak. So unfortunately, unless private funds are there to, to do a project, then the, the way that they write these senior housing lists doesn't put our people at an advantage for living in their own town. So I think that there are some other things that can be done to go back to the original plan, to allow our recreation program to grow, to stretch out that property. And I think that can be done just using, you know, people working together in our town. Outside of that, that's the reasoning I have behind it because I don't see where it's going to lead to a good thing for us from a housing standpoint. And I see where it can lead to a good thing for us if we stay on the original path that was put forward by the previous councils.
Is there anything we really need to do with that as far, because it's not technically within city limits. It's not, I guess the word would be, I don't know, is it truly zoned one way or another? It's just ag land currently. If we were to do a project, we'd one, have to annex it, and two, rezone, correct? That process would have to happen if we were, a project did come?
If we were to develop it as a park, we would need to annex it into the city and develop it as a park. It's city-owned already.
Okay.
That would be a straightforward process, but it would require an annexation. From a planning standpoint, nothing has changed in terms of going towards or away from a park or recreational use. In April, late April 2022, the city at the time did release a request for proposal for a senior housing project using the city-owned land. As I understand, by the deadline, the city did not receive any proposals, but subsequently in August, late August 2022, the city did receive a proposal from the Christian, Christian church home. We have not subsequently entered into an agreement or anything formal with CCH. There have been ongoing discussions pursuant to the city's RFP that was released in 2022. If it were the direction of the council, I think we could end those conversations if we so chose. And I don't think anything other than that would need to occur to move it back into a, you know, a recreational-based use. And if we ever wanted to develop it, of course, we'd go through the entitlement process. We'd seek annexation and then develop it as such.
What's the current status of the communications with CCH?
The last time we talked to CCH, they had a leadership, a leadership change. So Seymour is no longer with, Seymour, I believe that's his name. He's no longer with CCH. They have provided us the contact information of, of the new lead there. Prior to that, the communication was CCH wanted to wait until March to see how Prop 1 went at the state level to determine if it was going to be financially feasible from them. We have not heard subsequent to the vote in March and that proposition, how that has affected them and, and any new numbers that they have run.
So I am under the impression that this piece of land, as well as the other one over on St. John, are recreation pieces of land. And any sale of those pieces of land that, those funds go into recreation funds because those pieces of land are allocated to recreation. Is that still the case?
I, I think I would want to look into that a little bit further. They have been designated from a land use standpoint as parks. But I don't, I don't know if, if the revenue from a sale, just because it's been designated as a park, would necessarily go into the recreation coffers, so to speak.
Yeah. I mean, I can just say generally speaking, it, it would be a sale of, it'd be a sale or purchase or real estate transaction of the corporation, so to speak, of, of the city. So I don't know why it would be restricted. I mean, certainly if you have property or infrastructure that's owned by water or sewer of the city, that would be restricted, restricted revenue. But that's just the, that's just sort of a baseline. Maybe there were extra stipulations involved with something like that. And I can just say that that piece of property is within the county currently. So the county has land use authority. It's important to, to just remember that we would be essentially a private developer in the county's land, just like someone were trying to build property and develop property within the city. We have the land use authority over our city. The county has land use authority over the county areas. We would be a private owner of land essentially within the county. So there would just be, there would have to be a conversation or look into the viability of taking the existing use, and even if we're tweaking it a little bit, unless and until it gets actually annexed into the city, and then we zone it however we want. But, yeah.
Is there, with regards to annexation, is there a financial benefit to annexing sooner than later, even if we don't do anything with it? Or is it best to leave it as is and leave it county unannexed? I mean, something you guys can look into and let us know. I don't need to answer tonight, but just a thought of, does it make sense to annex now? Is there any implications financially or risk-wise one way or another?
I mean, I don't know any, I don't know any costs that go up, other than the over-the-counter costs at Lafco will go up. I mean, just like everything else, right? But I don't know why it would be particularly more expensive or more lucrative.
No, is there any reason to push to do it anytime sooner than?
From a financial perspective, no. I mean, there could be development reasons, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay. I was just checking if we're going to look at that property, if that makes sense to you something now.
Along that same line, how does the, like, sphere of influence affect it?
Is it within the sphere right now?
It is. The property is within the sphere.
That's good.
And Mayor, to answer your question, the only determining factor for annexation would be if it were to be developed. If we annex after development, a commercial, residential, or industrial piece, the city gets a portion of the sales tax dollars. If it's annexed before the development, the city gets more of the share of, of the property tax dollars. So if it were to become a city-owned park, there would be no impetus to annex, you know, prior, except for if we were developing a city-owned park, we'd want to annex before we developed, just because it's a city-owned park. Thank you.
I did support Mayor Pro Tim Hagan on this agenda item. I think it'd be advantageous to see what staff could come up with as far as, as a plan, some estimated costs and a timeline. Maybe something very generic. I don't think it would need to go out for an RFP, but just, just for where staff to put together some numbers and what their thoughts are on how this could become achievable.
What, to be achievable, that this be allocated for recreation purposes?
Yeah, to be developed into a reg-
To be developed.
Yeah.
That's a one to two comma number.
Yeah, that's-
When they looked at it a while back, it was pretty expensive.
And for the city to do-
I'm sure it would.
That's what we're looking for, is for the city to do it?
Yeah, it would be a city-owned park.
Yeah, definitely using prevailing wage, it would be very expensive.
Anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item at the podium tonight? For any other input, or anybody online for that matter? Bringing it back here, we can, is it something we can work with consensus? Do we want a motion and a vote?
You can get, this is really a direction item. So really, as long as staff is clear enough on what their marching orders are, that's, that's sufficient.
Personally, I would like to return it back to where we were, excuse me, where we were originally before we talked to CCH.
Or?
Because I just don't see it going anywhere productive, at least.
Well, has, has the status of that actually changed, though? Staff?
The status of?
Status of the property. So Andy's asking to revert that back to where it was. Essentially, it's still slated as recreational property for the city, right? So we don't necessarily need to, to change anything?
Am I, I think they're just talking to CCH still, though.
To suspend, I guess it would just be to suspend talks with CCH. Is that kind of the direction you would want from us?
Yeah, or, you know, suspend the city's interest in receiving proposals or exploring proposals for a development of a, a senior housing complex.
I think it has to be done personally with private funds. This is the only way that we can do it here and control our own destiny, unfortunately.
So that, that brings up a question, right? If a nonprofit were to work on developing that property and lease said property from the city, they develop that property, terminate the lease, and return the property back to the city, and then the city would take ownership and essentially would become a city park?
You'd want, you'd want the nonprofit to do some kind of bona fide operation out there for a period of time. I mean, it can't be transparent as something like that. You'd want the nonprofit to really do something for the public and for the property. And we could probably work out some kind of MOU to that effect. I mean, so I guess my answer is yes, but it, it has to be, there has to be a bona, bona fide purpose that the nonprofit is serving, has out there, as opposed to just to avoid prevailing wage, if that makes sense.
Well, my hearing at the council level that we are looking to terminate current conversations with CCH. Obviously, if somebody's got a project, I would say terminate at the current moment. I think that anybody who's got a project can come to us and talk. It doesn't exclude that from ever happening. We're just not going to formally send out RFBs for a while, is what it looks like. It's kind of what we're looking for and-
That's kind of what I was thinking, but I have only one vote, so I don't know what everyone else is thinking.
Well, I would think we could, we could terminate any, any publicly funded opportunity, or any non-privately funded opportunities that we're looking at, at the senior housing development. Obviously, it's still a need. We still need it. We just understand that the way that it would be done with any form of government funding, kind of hamstrings our residents, and we're not, definitely not in favor of that. Should you get on board with something like that?
Yeah, 100%. I would. I just have a problem when they don't put our citizens first, unfortunately. If they're going to build it in our town, then our citizens should have a first crack at it.
So are you saying that if there was a different organization that did that, they would be able to, that puts citizens first, would be able to use this piece of land for senior housing? If that was the case?
As it sounds. As it sounds, as it stands currently, yeah, they could bring it to us that way. But what I, from what I've read, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's a loophole somewhere that I'm not aware of, the problem is in the government funding. It really takes, strips away local oversight, local ability to allow our citizens to thrive, and you're pretty much transplanting people from other towns into our town. There's no, on those lists, it's not, there's no prioritization, there's no weighting model that gives us priority as citizens.
Okay, I'm just asking because the agenda item itself is returning it back to recreation versus housing, but it's just this particular housing that we're, and the way that they're going to be filling it, that is the issue at this, is that correct?
Gotcha. My personal feeling is I'd like to return it back to recreation, long-term, completely. But depending on what the rest of the council feels comfortable with, I mean, but that's what my feelings are, is that it should be rec land, long-term goal should be rec land.
So we just all came to a consensus of what Mayor Pro Tim just said, long-term, we're looking to move this to strictly rec. Is that enough direction for you to work with at that point? At the base level of moving it from any housing whatsoever, but strictly back to recreational use, would that be enough direction if that was a consensus from us?
Enough for me.
At the base level? Is that, do we have a consensus on something with that effect?
Just another quick question on that. Does that affect the process that we're going through with the housing element at all?
No, this property is not in the city limits and therefore was not explored as a potential housing opportunity for the housing element.
Thank you.
We got, are the two of us on the same idea? Is everybody else okay with that, or?
Yes, I am.
Yes.
So we're going to move it to recreation then versus housing for those 18-plus acres? With that direction, do it as you can with those folks, the CCH. At this point then, we're going to come to council communication. Let's start off with Councilman Engel, what do we have tonight?
Well, I have no communications this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilman Walker.
Thanks for the few that came out tonight. I also don't have much to communicate, but happy Easter and welcome back, everybody.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim.
Happy Easter and welcome back, and that's all I have too. Thank you.
I think we got a theme there. I'm just going to throw more thing. Hope for fair weather, and we have some good baseball games on Saturday. Come on out and watch some ballgames. With that, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We'll see you next time.